David Brown, a former employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Jonathan Skipworth, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Sean Sabatka, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Okay, we're going to begin with the Lake Shore Road Elementary's BPT presentation. So you may come up and take it.
So Tina, there's a thin microphone there. If you press the button, the green light will come on and.
There we go. All right. Hello and good evening. And I will give you a little snapshot of Lake Shore Road Elementary building. Just to give you an overview, these are our building demographics. We currently have 661 students. We are down 10 students from last year, but I did note here, even though it looks like our numbers did not change, 180 of our students last year were remote. So they were not in our building, meaning they weren't on buses, not eating in the cafeteria. And we had empty classrooms of students that were remote. We currently have 89 staff members, six additional from last year. And we have seven CTD classrooms. Those are co-teaching special ed classrooms. We are currently hosting third and fourth grade Bear Road Elementary students and staff last year and this year. We are at 25% chronically absent and our number of transient, we have 59. And we are at 30% free and reduced lunches.
There we go.
All right. Do you want me to review that or are we okay?
We're good.
Okay. All right. So you can see our mission and vision. All right. And chronic absenteeism. So for our 2019, 2020 data not available due to school closure in the pandemic. 2020 and 2021, we've had 25% chronically absent. And as of Bed's Day 2021, we've had 30% chronically absent. Our building goal is to reduce the chronically absent by 3%. So some strategies that we have in place are the theme days for half days, communication with families to offer support and resources, letters and visits to the home. So this is a very tricky situation this year because of COVID. Number of students having to be quarantined. I do have some students that have been out more than that they, more than they've been in school due to being quarantined. Also having to send students home because of symptoms and not being able to return until they get a COVID test. Some students and parents have just said they'd prefer to wait out the 10 days, which doesn't really help the absenteeism in the building. So we're hoping that we see some, some light at the end of that tunnel. Social emotional learning. So as you can see, right here is our biomass data. And some strategies that we have in the building is we are using zones of regulation. That's a program that we've used over the last three years and our school psychologist has done training for staff on zones of regu- regulation. We've put some snippets into morning announcements and we've put those posters in every classroom. We're also using restorative circles. And that is great for building community, getting students to talk about their feelings, kind of giving them a voice in, in their education and what's going on in school. We also use second step in kindergarten first, and we've recently added that to second grade. We have our ADAPEP counseling going into our kindergarten through fourth grade. And we do currently have 85 students that receive pullout counseling interventions and only 14 of the 85 are IEP students. And all the students listed in the red up here have been offered a direct service or parents have been offered a direct service as well as far as counseling or any other services we can offer those families. So our goals are to increase the social and academic areas, which are, you know, our hardest hit areas due to the pandemic. Students not knowing how to socialize. Like I said, 180 of our students were remote. So something as simple as communicating in the cafeteria or playing on the playground. These are all skills that we're having to review and reteach. And our biomass data is reviewed at our grade level meetings that we have weekly with our grade level teams and our social worker and our psychologists go over this information with teachers. And in that picture right there, if you can see it, that is Lawrence Briggs. He's our promise zone specialist and just want to give him a huge shout out. He has been a great asset to our building and I hope that that is something that we can continue moving forward. All right. And then I will let Amy take it away and talk about our building data.
So this year we were fortunate to have, sorry, is that better? The new Ames Web screening tool that we were able to use with all of our students in grades K4. And we were able to take a look closely at the skills they have and the skills they need to improve in early literacy and math. So the first slide here shows the tiered structure for our kindergarten students in their early literacy. And it shows a little bit more red than green, but our philosophy is to grow the green across the year. So we're working on moving our students through each of the different tiers to increase their level of skills. And the scores that we have here are national norms. But a note to take into consideration is that these norms were created pre-COVID years. So it's going back to, I believe, 2018 perhaps before all of this happened. So at the kindergarten level, our tier three numbers are about 61% for the red group and we are currently servicing 27% of those in a kindergarten pullout AIS intervention program. This is the first year that we've been able to pull out the kindergarten students and give them some explicit intervention at the early grade level. In first grade, our tier red group is currently at 63% of the grade level. And for those students in first grade, we're actually able to service 41% of that 63 again in a small group pullout intervention model. For a second grade, you'll see the colors are starting to balance out a little bit more. So we're getting more students arriving in September in that nice tier one green zone at 33% profusion. And in the red tier, there were about 50% of them in the tier three zone. And for second grade, we are actually servicing 48% of that 50 students that were able to receive pullout tiered instruction through AIS. Third grade, a lot more green. It's looking better as we're going along. The red tier three group again came in at 39 support, requiring that high level of intense support. And third graders, we have 15% of those students that are currently receiving interventions. But when looking at the different triangled tiers in the other grade levels, third grade has significantly more students in the green than those previously looked at grades do. And then fourth grade is a beautiful triangle with lots of green showing. At the red tier, there are 30% of our fourth graders that would require a tier three intervention. And at fourth grade, we are currently servicing 5% of those students from September through January.
So one of the things I just want to add about Lake Shore is I think our teachers and our service providers really do a nice job at working hard to close that gap. So as you, what Amy just showed you here, kindergarten, very high needs. So we do put a lot of our interventions at those levels so that by the time they leave us, fourth grade going to middle school, we're hoping that they are as close to being proficient as possible. So these are just some strategies that we've implemented at Lake Shore to kind of boost our English language arts. And that is the full implementation of the Sande Phonics program. We have nine teachers that are piloting ELA programs, meaning they are sharing strategies with their grade level teams of things that are working in their classrooms. We have an instructional coach who is with us about 2.8 days during the week to support our literacy instruction. We also have the implementation of instructional teaching assistants that have a focus on phonics and phonemic awareness, which has been one of our huge building initiatives this year and last year. The full implementation of HEGERTY, which is a phonemic awareness program. The multi-tiered system of support protocols, which are new for the district this year to work to provide support for teachers and students. And we also had a letters training last year for our staff. It was voluntary. And one of our reading teachers was a trainer and she offered this training to our staff. And letters training really is about teaching students the foundation and how students learn how to read. And we also have the weekly professional learning circles, grade level team meetings to discuss the pacing guides. They have their student kid talks and they talk about strategies that are working in their classrooms. And Amy's going to tell you about the math.
So again, using the Ames Web Plus screener, we were able to look at our students in kindergarten through fourth grade to see where they are coming into school in September with their math skills. Currently, right now in kindergarten, those tier three students are at about 48% of the kindergarten population. And currently there is not an AIS pullout program for math at the kindergarten level. However, when we moved to first grade, we were able to initiate that program this year for the first time doing a math pullout program to service first graders. So the first grade tier three number is at 53% and we were able to pull 7% of those students out with our AIS teachers working very closely with John Wojcik to develop that first grade intervention model since it's new for us this year. And they are mainly focusing on gaining number sense and using number talks to develop those skills at the early levels. Our second grade math students for the red tier three is about 50% of that population. We have 7% of the second graders also being pulled out for a math intervention program through AIS. And they are using a math intervention program called Do the Math, which focuses again on using number talks, number sense and working through the upper levels of addition and subtraction before reaching some of those higher level math skills. The philosophy is taking the students back to where those gaps would be and building a stronger math foundation so that then they can become independent with their classroom level math as well. Our third grade math numbers, we had 39% of the students falling in that red, meaning that they would need a high level of math support. And we also have 7% of those students receiving math intervention in a pullout model as well. And then our fourth grades are at about 30% for their tier three. And we have 10% of the fourth grade population receiving a pullout for math support.
All right. So you can see some strategies that we have in place for math is the math workshop model. And I feel like a lot of, the district has put a lot of emphasis on training teachers with the math program. When we did take that on, we had math coaches brought into the building. And I know our current math coach always makes himself available for staff when they might need assistance or just feedback on what they're doing. I can tell you from the teachers that I've observed during math workshop is the teachers in my building do feel very confident about what they're doing. They're confident with the math workshop process with how they're teaching math. I would say the only issues that they might have are sometimes with the pacing and the content as far as in third grade, a lot of time is spent on multiplication. And I have talked to the new math director, Nick, and he's been in the building and really wanting to hear the different building perspectives and how we might align that better within the building and across the district. Let's see. Teachers just teaching a wide variety of strategies. And that's what the math program does to teach them number sense. I think of when I learned how to teach math, it was one way and you memorized it and that's how you did it. So today we're teaching kids a variety of strategies. They choose what they want. And that really helps build the number sense, which is a huge goal for the teachers in our building. You know, Amy talked about building phonological awareness. For math, it's really all about building number sense so that when they get older, they really know how numbers work, you know, and they can conceptually picture that when they're doing math. Also peer teaching and the instructional groups that teachers are using during math workshop. And of course, the aligned common assessments and benchmarks, which is also something that we didn't always have in the past. All right. Professional learning communities. So our grade levels meet weekly for 50 minutes. And the AIS CTD and counseling staff are also working on implementing their own professional learning communities. We have an academic intervention teacher to work with each grade level this year. Kid talks are being done during the PLCs, which I can say at third and fourth, they do take a lot of time because they have so many sections of third and fourth grade. They review Ames Web data, biomass data, and really talk about what's working. All right. And just some celebrations this year. It's nice to be able to have those celebrations that we did not get to have last year. Our back to school barbecue, we had about 900 RSVPs for that. So it was really great. We had our first third grade chorus concert. Couple of weeks, we had about 156 singers and that was at the junior high. We've had a lot of our, you know, Halloween tracker treats we did where they walked around the track and really just getting students involved in the community. You can see we have our hat and net and tree there as well. So special thank you for you. I hope that we weren't too long-winded for you. But again, thanks for having us here and for all of your support in our building. Any questions for us?
Thank you. We'll start. Yes, Mary?
Yes. Thank you very much for that presentation. I know that a lot of our students were recovering from being, having schooling be remote last year. And some of these numbers are alarming. But the, with the kids in the red tier, like how is it determined who gets the additional intervention? You know, I've heard there's, you know, 30% need intervention and 5% are getting the intervention. How do you determine who gets that?
So yeah, so the first thing we did was to administer the Ames Web screening tool. And that placed all of our students in the grain, like grade level into different percentage rankings. So we zeroed in on the first to 10th percentile as the students that are in the most significant need of intervention. But as you said, there was an alarming amount of students at that. So then we took a second screening tool for reading, which came from one of our new interventions called Really Great Reading. And that has its own diagnostic within the program. So we took that chunk of students in the first 10th percentile, administered this second diagnostic tool, which kind of narrowed in on the skills that they would need. And that program actually places students into group sizes and into programs based on what their skill needs were. So that was the second data point that we were able to look at. And then the third part of it came into grouping students together, meeting with their classroom teachers for input on what does this test show and what are you seeing in the classroom? Because it's not always an exact match. So we took that teacher input very seriously in creating our groups and trying to create a schedule that worked for the students to be pulled out into our group and still be able to maintain all of their core instruction in the classroom as well. So it was kind of a combination of puzzle pieces coming together.
And it's a great start, but it does it, there's more students that need help.
There always are.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have to work on that. We do. Also with the chronic absenteeism, when the students are not in school, are they getting their assignments? Are they getting the work so they can stay on track? Are the parents helping with that?
So if they are quarantined, there is work that is sent home. Unfortunately, that does fall on the parents being able to support that. I do have some teachers at the upper level that do allow their students to zoom in while they're teaching. Obviously that's more difficult for K1 and 2 because they do need a lot of support. So we're very dependent on the support that we get from parents at home when students are being quarantined.
Right. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Just if I could, because you brought up an interesting thing that stuck out to me, just so I can rent my brain around it. When you, like you mentioned in first grade math, I think you were talking about 53% of the students requiring tier three support, 7%, as Mary said, getting services. What, what's the, give me a number for that roughly. How many students is that then?
Nine.
Okay. So I agree. I mean, we need to, need to do better, but.
And part of our philosophy going into those, sorry, lower grades is that they need small group intervention. So when you're looking at taking these students back to a first grader had a partial year of kindergarten and likely no preschool experience at all, we're taken back to just identify what numbers are and try to give them some of that general awareness. So keeping your group sizes at three or four students is really ideal to give them that intense intervention, especially at the younger grades, when the groups get larger, the focus is lost. And then you have to think about if you're really communicating what your goals are for those students. It becomes a challenge as the group size gets larger.
Well, actually between you and Mary, that was, those are the exact questions and concerns, of course, we all had.
Cause I'm sure Mr. Crabtree's watching and I want to make sure we get all the questions that he went there. I have, I don't think I'm going to ask this question correctly, but I'm gonna give it a try and I'll, I'll show my ignorance. See, a little bit of understanding is dangerous because I know what a universal screener is. I was involved in this a little bit. So Ames Web, whatever, is, is new this year. So you call it, it's a universal screener to determine where we're falling in these triangles for the tiers of intervention if needed. You're administering that, I want to say, three times?
Yes.
Yeah, I can see somebody nodding back there.
Did the September benchmark in the first few weeks.
This is a standards-based assessment that's, did, is it, it's coming from Ames Web already done? Is it mapped out based on where they say the student should be or where we?
It's where we would like them to fall at the end of the school year.
Okay. Oh, so.
So the skills are assessed for what they would need to know at the end of the school year. And the normed data is compared back to how did students do on this?
Okay. Cause I thought I heard an explanation in one of the last BPTs that it was mapped to the end of the school year, but this one is putting it in chunks. Maybe, I think, okay. No, that, that helps. That helps you understand because I was familiar in, with a universal, with a screening tool that was quite different, much less.
Along with these thought processes that we're discussing, there is, I see a progressive problem because we're not, you know, it started because of COVID. It probably may get worse at every year that they progress. Is there a discussion about a plan that, how to help that as they reach the next grade level and so on, until they get to the fifth grade?
Well, I think our winter data will be very telling. And in the past, when we've used Ames Web, we've seen a huge increase from fall to winter. And I think the fact, just having students back in school five days a week because they do have a lot of holes right now. So I think we really need to see where we are filling those gaps. And are we making the progress that, that we want to see? Our AIS team does progress monitor many of those students in the red so that weekly or bi-weekly, we are able to see if the intervention that they're giving is working. And in more cases than not, we are seeing a lot of growth in our students just by having them back in school.
It's always our hope that as we reach this January benchmarking and the students are measured again, that we've been able to give some of students enough of a boost to release them back in the classroom and to pull from that lower percentage and get a new group of students in. It doesn't happen with all of the students, but we do get some turnover so we can keep kind of pulling away at that percentage and bringing more of the students into AIS as others are able to exit.
Excellent. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I don't see any other questions. So thank you. Thank you for your time in answering those questions.
Thank you.
Not sure how to open this one.
Just unplug it. Okay, we're at the comments from the audience part. Ms. Rera, did we have anyone signed up or? Okay, then we have Board of Education Committee reports. Just Scanlon, do you have anything to report for us on policy of a date?
Actually, I do have something to talk about. Well, first of all, we're not meeting this month, our committee. We're not, we met at November 30th. So we're not going to meet again until January 18th. But I wanted to talk about many times we have asked, is there any BOSI services out there that could be utilized where we could save money as a district? So it was brought to my attention that BOSI has a
So it was brought to my attention that BOSI has a service for monitoring and maintaining the power policy manual for school boards. And many districts in our area participate in this service. So we had a conference call with Erie One BOSI. It's not our local BOSI that offers it, but it's Erie One BOSI. And they kind of presented their service to us. And we had the opportunity to ask questions and they sent us some information on it. So I, we just wanted to start the investigative process and see if it was something that would be beneficial to our district. So I, we do have some information to share with the board. And this is just, you know, discovery phase right now to just see if it's something that'll work for us and will we be able to save money, possibly on legal fees for our, all our policy maintenance and review. So that's more to come on that.
So you've, you've done policy since I've been here.
Yeah.
Probably before, right? So did you like what you saw?
Um, so.
Not to put you on the spot, but anything that'd be useful?
Yes, so when new state mandates come forward and they have three lawyers that they consult and it, it sounds like it's something that, you know, possibly we would be cost savings for us. So right now, we're asking questions. And my thought is we would reach out to the other districts in the area that use the service and get their thoughts on it. And they sent us a package to look at, like a proposal. So, you know, we'll be sharing that with everyone.
Okay, thank you. Interesting. Thank you. I know Mr. Crabtree would want to just remind everybody the Legislative Committee has a meeting on the fifth of January. And I believe also he did include the, the BOSI's report did go out. So we're all, should be all set there if there are no questions. And we will go to superintendent's comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. As you can see, the BPT presentations continue to focus on data and use that to drive what they're doing within the buildings. So there is a lot of conversation from the screening tools. And I hope you're impressed with what you're seeing. They've really tried to make sure they're consistent and that they're making their goals all based around data. I do want to congratulate the vocal chorus that was out here today. Again, the talent that is in our district is amazing. And they continue to just show us how, how strong that program really is. My one, just a reminder, we are still continuing to work with pharmacies and just parents that are looking to have their students that are between five and eleven years old to get vaccinated. So there will be some students at the end of this week getting their second dose. And we've connected with the pharmacy for early in January for parents that are interested. And again, it's only for parents that are interested. I do want to compliment the boys' basketball team. Won another game, I guess, tomorrow. They are going up against West Jenny, who is also undefeated. So it looks like it'll be a, a very good game tomorrow night. Had some inquiries. Cisroel had Santa Claus visiting on the local fire truck the other night, but people were inquiring because they, they saw fire engines and things. But it was all for a good cause. I've just been trying to get out to schools and see students and see what's going on. Allen Road, last week, the weather was quite warm. Kids were able to get outside and play, so that was an exciting piece. And I did speak to a group of students up at the high school. I think we put that in the weekly newsletter. And again, just talking to them about SEL needs and things that we can do for them. And one of the things I was working with Lisa when I got back, they would like to have a list of all the different resources that are in location so they, they know who does what or who they can go to for what. And maybe even put a, a picture with, with that person so they just get a chance to know them. So they were saying there's a lot of resources, but they just don't kind of know how to navigate them. So I think that is, that is all, Mr. Professor.
Okay. Board of Education comments, anybody have anything they want to share? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to routine action items. If I could get a motion for A and B, they're the minutes of the meeting of December sixth and December thirteenth. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Ms. Scanlon, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. If I get a motion for item C and D, they're the classification of disabled students on, by committee, as special ed for in-school and for preschool. Motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Mrs. Kruger, that C and D is before us. Any question? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Item E, acknowledgement of business office reports. Motion, please place it before us. Motion, Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. We have item A, resolution creative two-point-oh FTE, teaching assistant at Allen Road. Motion, place that before us, please. Ms. Kruger, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any questions? That was in a Friday letter, the recent one. Seeing no discussion, all in favor. Pose that is carried. I'd like to take B and C together, the creation of robotics club and the FTE positions for the Positive Actions for Change position at Cisroel North Circle High School. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Marizio. B and C are before us. Any discussion? All in favor. Pose, those are carried. And D, the declaration of non-marketable surplus. To place it before us, motion, Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Here, we have instructional personnel report, A, a motion, place that before us, please. Motion, Mrs. Kruger, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Support staff personnel, B, please. Motion, place it before us. Motion, Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion there? B is before us. Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Thank you. Going to make a motion for executive session. I'll ask for a second on that. I'm going to move, motion to move into executive session, review two legal matters with no action to follow. And for the purpose of reviewing the employment records of four individuals with no action to follow. If I could get a second, second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? All in favor. Pose that is carried. All right, and then a motion for adjournment, please, since there'll be no action to follow. Motion, Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Mr. Herman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.